All right. With the agenda, you already know that we got another quote for K and you've already got it. We'll have one addition under new business, approve and appraisal for Camille Mark LLC. That is the golf course, a cost of between eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars. We're in tribunal on that, so we have to get an appraisal on that. Because we have to prove it at the tribunal. We're two month called. Yeah, we have to prove their appraisal.
Does Camille's have an appraisal?
No, they do not. We have to. We're doing it. We're taking, we're going to a tribunal. The lawyer called and said that he needs to get an appraisal on that, Colleen. So. This is a suit that we're doing at the tribunal.
And they're not taking our tax bill with them again?
No, no, no. They're fighting it.
So we have to get an appraisal?
Yes.
And they're, they're not getting an appraisal, but we have to pay for an appraisal?
They're paying them for appraisal too, improperly. Shelley knows what she's doing and still gets Mr. Tuma. So I would go according to what they're saying. Well, probably at the end, they will pay for it. I'm not sure.
We sent out the 2021 assessments and that should have their S E B on it.
Well, we turned them down. You go to tribunal. We gotta go through these steps. Okay, so who knows at the end, then they get charged for these things. Okay?
So we'll see, we'll see what the appraisal process is.
Is there any other additions?
No.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the.
New business. It'll be N.
To make a motion to approve the agenda with the added item.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All in favor, say aye. Five ayes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is approve our meeting minutes of Tuesday, September fourteenth. Motion by Goldston. Supported by Stevens to approve our meeting minutes of September fourteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Next is our financial report from our treasurer.
If you will indulge me, because we are doing things with new systems. And just this afternoon, I received, well, this is, this is good news because it's money in our accounts. But with our BSNA programs being updated, we are getting some electronic transfers into our accounts, which I am not aware of until the account comes from first date. So I was made aware of a six hundred dollar refund of election expenses. And I'm going to add it on to the September report. And I will give you an amended report either after this meeting or before the next meeting. But if you'll make note of this, that the beginning balance was a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and twenty-two cents. The receipts, however, have been increased by six hundred dollars, which brings that to a total of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. We made dispersments of seventy-four thousand, thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, leaving us with an ending balance of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred, sixty-three dollars and two cents in the general fund.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September financial report with the six hundred dollars added, mentioned by the treasurer.
I'll support it. Motion by Stevens. Supported by Anderson.
I'm sorry, Brenda, you think I will be sure of prices, amended financial report?
That's what it is. What you have in front of you is not accurate.
Okay.
So you need to approve it as amended.
Okay, I'll prove it as amended.
Yes.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, our sheriff Matt King will be.
I think I'll stand here so I'm not talking anybody's back.
Just one minute. I'll let. No, you better stay here.
I want to be out of the way from the camera, that's all.
I'll, I'll, I'll roll call votes where yes, motion carries.
You want to be out of the range of the camera?
Well, I'm sure people want to. I wanted to finish whatever you're finishing.
Thank you.
I didn't want to block either. Well, my name's Matt King. I'm the sheriff here in St. Clair County. And I'm going around the different township and city board meetings just to give a little overview of the last year and introduce myself and make myself available for any questions. I try to make it pretty quick so I don't eat up too much time. I appreciate the board allowing me to spend some time talking to everybody here. Great to see a pretty good turnout, so. Again, my name's Matt King. I've been at the sheriff's department now for twenty-three years. I started my law enforcement career, actually, I grew up in St. Clair Township. A year out of high school, I was hired by Detroit Police Department, went down there and worked there in Detroit Police Department for two years. Came back home and been at the sheriff's office ever since. I've had a great opportunities throughout my career here and worked my way up through the ranks. Was the road patrol captain for three and a half years. Ran for sheriff as Sheriff Donlin was not running again, was elected and then appointed a couple of months early to Sheriff Donlin, took a job at the state. So November would be about a year for me. So thought it'd be a good idea to come out, talk to people, give an overview of what's been going on and make sure people know that, you know, I've, I've worked in our agency for a long time. I worked with former Sheriff Donlin, but not just sitting in a chair in Mark Taylor days. We're doing some good things at the sheriff's office and again, wanted to kind of give a report. So I want to start off with some things that we have at the sheriff's office and end with some things we've been able to accomplish in my first year of being in office. Road patrol, there's these flyers, I'm not going to read every, read this word for word because it'd take forever, but there's some numbers there. Last year, we had around forty thousand calls for service, which was down because of COVID for a lot of different reasons. I think we all understand the climate we're in, so I'm not going to get into it too much. But our, our numbers were down. I suspect this year's numbers will be extremely high because people have been creeped out for a long time and there's, there's some, some behaviors out there that need our attention. In the road patrol, we have several specialties as well as obviously the road patrol, we have special response team, an ax investigator team, drug task force, strength, drug tracking, drug and tracking K nine, commercial motor vehicle, cyber crimes. And there's, there's lots of little groups that help all these other groups, like their negotiator team. We also have a secondary road patrol and several other little ones. We maintain a road patrol for the county in general, but we obviously have several different contracts. Again, they're listed, I don't have to read them all off, but our road patrol, our law enforcement side, including our drug task force, has ninety-seventh sworn from myself on down. Drug task force, you know, we're a mileage-based drug task force, which really gives us a lot of latitude on how we run our organization. Very busy in two thousand, in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, but our numbers were down again because of COVID. You know, when it first started, we didn't know exactly what was going to happen, so we, we had our deputies pare down their investigations to bigger, more elaborate investigations just because we didn't want to have contact with anybody, like nobody, you know, we didn't want, our deputies getting sick and we didn't want to make anybody else sick. That included our informants. And we had a plan, right? We really saw COVID and it was something out of left field. A lot of places could pare down their service, close doors, go remotely. Obviously, at law enforcement, we could not do that. We had to make sure we could man the team, if you will. We didn't know if our, our road patrol would be decimated or our jail would be decimated as far as our employees being sick. So our drug task force, we asked them really slow about what they're doing. They were kind of our bench, right? So we could really control, because they're not in our building, we could control how many people they could, they would be coming in contact with. Still kept an eye on the, the drug problems in our community, but we wanted them there, healthy, ready to shave their beards and put the uniform on if they had to, if we had a lot of people get sick. We also drew up some MOUs with other agencies, so if they had a lot of people get sick, we'd go help them. Vice versa, the law enforcement, the whole really got together, they came up with some plans to make sure there would not be an interruption of service to our citizens. Again, there's some numbers there. Our, our search warrants were down, but we still were pretty high in getting drugs off the street. Over eight hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of drugs received and a hundred thirty-three dollars just, just cash seized that was directly connected to drug money. The drug business, I should say. Again, lots of numbers there. I suspect next year, they'll be all very much higher than the word this year. Our dive team, you know, we have a, a pretty good sized dive team, around, I think, forty-five or fifty deputies. Something we changed with the dive team is we used to have a full-time lieutenant run it, but it was, it wasn't one of our regular employees. Usually somebody who retired from somewhere, somewhere else came in, it was kind of their second job and they ran the dive team for us. We saw a need to have more connection with our agency and we also saw a need for a training sergeant. So what we did was we morphed the two positions into one. So now we have a sergeant that was promoted to the road and then he runs the dive team at our training division. And what's great is here's a guy that'll work in that capacity for several years and move on. He's got every reason to have the right goals in mind for our agency and of course for his future. He's not just going to retire and move on down the road. He's, he's got a little more skin in the game. And I've, I've gotten great feedback from our, our dive members, I'm sorry, the marine division and dive team together. Our dive team has twenty-nine members. They had thirty-five call-outs with four drunk recoveries in twenty twenty. And of course, they work all the special events like boat training and anything that's on the water, float down, things like that. Our marine division, again, another, another group of fine deputies, the marine division are very unique in that they're regular people, have regular jobs. They go to basically mini academy, learn about marine life. A lot of them have a marine background, have boats and things like that, they're just interested in helping. And they, they do get paid a wage for this at a pretty low rate and they're really just out there trying to serve the public, they do a great job. We had over thirty-one hundred hours of patrol in twenty twenty. They police twenty-three bowling accidents. And again, I worked all those special events I talked about earlier. Our correction division is one of our largest divisions. And people don't think about that when, unless you have a family member that works for the correction division. Because when you think of the sheriff's office, you probably think of the people you see at the calls out and about, the pictures in the paper, our police cars and policemen and women. But our correction division is, is again, a very big part of our agency. We booked in three thousand, two hundred and sixty inmates in twenty twenty. Again, the numbers were low. We were asking law enforcement agencies to request warrants for a lot of charges that we would have taken, people in custody. That being said, we did not take safety lightly. If, if somebody needed to go to jail, they're going to jail. And that's our job and we had to figure that out. Now, imagine having a jail, we usually have about five hundred people in our facility. Right now, we're at about three fifty-five because of some laws that were changed and the court shutting down, we were able to pare down the population. But also, we could control the population. People were booked in, they couldn't just be booked in and put in the area that we felt that they needed to go. They weren't just classified in and according to the crime. We had a quarantine until we got test results back from COVID. So if Friday, five people were arrested, they were all put in, obviously depending on sex, but they're all put in a cell and they had to wait there till their test came back. And at that point, they could be filtered in. That being said, we wanted to lower the numbers of people in each of our pods because again, we didn't want breakouts going, going through our facility. We did a very good job of making sure people stayed well. We had more employees unfortunately get sick than, than, well, not unfortunate for our inmate population, but we had employees get sick. And we're able to really control the inmate population, so we're, we're pretty proud of how well we did with that. We have several programs in the jail, a lot of people don't think about our, our sat or resident substance abuse treatment program. You know, going to jail, part of it's punishment, but we feel we have a responsibility and ability to, to have an impact on the inmates and detainees. So when they're with us and they leave, we want to give them tools and, and the ability, contacts and the ability to be better, right? We don't want to see the same people in and out. Because if we're seeing the same people in and out, the same citizens are getting victimized, right? So we have a lot of programs out there like the R sat, which is a condition of sentencing. And there's the ability for people to get treatment while they're in there, the medical assistant treatment plan for addicted population. They mix counseling in with medications that can help wean people off of their addiction and hopefully, you know, give them the tools to decide when they're out. Because we all know when, when people get out and away from the controlled environment, they have decisions to make. Well, they have the ability to make decisions differently now when they leave our facility because they have different information. They, or more information and tools to hopefully get better. And we keep those contacts through our community mental health and our substance abuse treatment when they leave our facility so they can work with the same people. They're not new faces, they're not strange faces. So we have a lot of programs in the jail. And again, there's, there's many more numbers in there. They kind of tell our day-to-day operation. Now accomplishments since twenty twenty, again, I talked about COVID nineteen outbreak. I was a captain in twenty nineteen when this broke out and I was assigned to the emergency operations center for three months, which was really a different environment for me because I'd done a law enforcement, law enforcement leader forever. And now I'm emergency operations and I was the law enforcement liaison for the county for what we were doing as a community to help control and attack the COVID nineteen epidemic. So again, we came up with plans for our road patrol deputies, a drug task force, a traffic division, and of course, our jail. And we're able to really keep people from being sick. We had two COVID nineteen vaccination clinics and got a hundred and thirty-five inmates. Obviously, it's, it's voluntary and we have since set up an onsite vaccination refrigerator work with our medical staff at the jail. So if you're booked in, you're asked, do you want the COVID, have you had the COVID nineteen? They could check the micro system, make sure you haven't had the vaccine already and we can offer the vaccine onsite. So we've had quite a few people take advantage of that. Since the last time I talked, I'm sure there's more, but it was forty-five. So that's, that's great that people, I think it might be up to seventy now. But people are taking the opportunity. You know, we got to cap that audience and again, it's my choice, they're actually any different if they get it or don't get it. But it is coming to a point where if people are vaccinated when they come in, we're looking at you in their quarantine so we don't have that bottleneck, okay? So we have a little more protection. Court video booths, we, we had to get really creative with the movement of inmates and detainees in our, in and out of our facility. And we realized whether we ever heard of COVID nineteen or not, every time somebody is brought out of our facility and brought back, we have the possibility for something bad happening. Maybe a flight risk, an assault on, on a corrections deputy, a car accident, or some other kind of disease being spread through our facility. So our reaction was to COVID nineteen, but the technology continued to be used. And we got video booths, so we're able to, we used to have one or two video booths, we're able to do arraignments and other court cases via video. And that way, the judge could be quicker in, in, in arraigning them and not have contact and not have the movement. Well, now we have, I think we have like seven now. So it really ups our ability. Now there's times where people need to go to court trials. We have victims to these crimes that should be replaced, you know, they're, they're the person that perpetrated against them. So we're obviously still doing that, but we got very creative with our video booths and technology. It's, it's been a kind of a thing that we're proud of because we've had four different counties come and look at our facility and say, how are you doing this? And when other sheriffs come from other counties and want to see how your jail's being run, that's a compliment. And I give all the credit to my jail staff. I don't want to stand up here and act like this was all my idea, that good staff that, that, that did a great job. We've updated our facility cameras. When the jail was built, it's not that old, it's like sixteen years old. But when it was built, we had analog cameras for them, you know, and I, maybe I'm aging myself, but I remember the old tube TVs and they're analog and I heard about these flat screen TVs and I went, how much clearer can it get? A lot, right? We all know that now. So we're able to update all the cameras. There's something like five hour cameras in the facility. Now, we, we had a test where we opened a drawer of the service office and took a still with the old camera, with the new camera. You can read the writing on, on piece of papers before, which is blurred. That's already helped us identify suspects and victims and assaults in the jail. And we've already, I think, had a couple of charges now where people were before. Unless we had witnesses in jail, the inmates aren't going to tell on each other. It's really hard to find out who did what because the cameras weren't that good. Important for the safety of, of our inmates and detainees and of course, our staff. We've also gotten body worn cameras. You know, I took off, as I talked about, always trying to get better. Sheriff Donlin was an excellent sheriff and I'm sure he would have pushed through with a lot of these programs. But I didn't want to sit idle and, and just keep doing the same thing. I want to look at what was, what was best out there. We talked about body worn cameras in the past, but just like any new, new thing, like if there's a brand new vehicle, the price is going to make, you probably want to wait a couple of years before you buy it because the bugs got to get worked out. So, and, and the other part was the financial piece. Storing all the data was expensive, the cameras aren't that expensive. So we had to come up with a financial plan, work with the county and also wanted to make sure we picked the, the best cameras we could. And they're really good cameras through Axon. They're also connected to our in-car cameras that we've updated. So very unique, I'll try to get this out quick, but it's a cool piece of technology. If you had a body worn camera and I had a body worn camera and you had a body worn camera. And we have a call that we go on. When you punch in the call that connects to the video, if I want to see what happened, I can punch you the, the call number and all your videos will come up and they can play simultaneously. Now, you might get on scene a little bit later than me and maybe you were before me, so the, the timing might be off. But you know, at five thirty-five, my camera's going to show that same time and it may not be at the scene yet, but they all mesh together and it really paints a picture of what's going on. And we, you know, the first call we got about a complaint, happened to be somebody complaining about a traffic stop, an interaction here with a deputy and we watched the camera and it was, we'd say that he from had to answer your questions. I'm just leaving it at that. There was, there was a funny story that was, that was spun up. When we called the complaint back, we said, do you know that he had a body worn camera on? And he said, no, I didn't know that. There wasn't even an argument. The interaction was actually pretty friendly and the gentleman wasn't even mad. I don't know if he went home and, and got riled up or whatever, but at any rate, our deputy was very appreciative to have that, that camera on. So it's good for training, evidence collection, and then again, making sure we keep our deputies and the, and the public accountable. So it's, it's a good tool. We've had, and we, we signed up for some enhanced training. You know, in law enforcement, so many things are, especially when you get in the administration and, and you folks deal as well at some level, liability, right? The big L word. Well, we, we usually find that our policies are either lacking, and I say us, I mean, law enforcement in general, or trainings lacking, or the documentation of training. And we've got, we signed up for a training program that's to Lexi Cole, which is one of the most respected training and policy written programs in the country for law enforcement. And then First Academy, which meshes ongoing training through video and it also downloads every time that deputy were to watch that video, what policy it's connected to. And that way, we can say, yes, he's been trained on this policy on this date and this is the training. And it really keeps track of things. So we're real proud of that because that, that enhances the training of deputies and accountability for everybody. Employee wellness program, this one I will take total credit for. I went to a National Academy in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, I'm sorry, fall of two thousand nineteen. And one of the classes I had, somebody had presented a employee wellness program. Something I've been interested in for a long time. So I'm in that mid-range old guy group, right? Where I started out, like I said, a year out of high school with, in Detroit and the guys I worked with were Vietnam vets. And they were over to my dad, right? And suck it up, get back to work and that kind of attitude, which is kind of how I grew up anyway. They worked for me, but realizing twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years of that, it won't work in law enforcement. The things that we see, the things we have to deal with mentally, physically, emotionally, and then in our personal lives, we bring that home, it's a different stress. Every job's got a different stress. Farmers have a different stress than I do, but we know now that distressors and challenges in law enforcement will greet somebody who's not as effective as, as a law enforcement officer, probably not a very good husband, wife or father sooner or later, and, and just a generally unhappy person. So if we know that, now we have a responsibility to do something about it. So having that knowledge, I said, we can't just stand by and pretend we're, we care, which we do, we have to put the plan in action. So we have a wellness program that is underway right now. Eventually, I want to have an app so that there can be access to different resources for deputies. And, and we cover mental health, physical health. You know, not everybody's got to look like, you know, a model or a football player, but you know, with law enforcement, we want to make sure we have longevity with each other and that'll also help with their ability to do the job and longevity when they retire. Financial guidance and spiritual support. So we wanted to really have an all encompassing plan that put the tools in the hands of our employees to be the best on the job and off the job. Again, that, that information that we were learning through the last twenty years in law enforcement brought about responsibility to do the right thing with it. And we've also been able to add a school resource officer in Memphis School District. We're excited to be a part of that team now. Memphis, obviously, I think everybody knows, half the cities in McComb and half the cities in St. Clair County. Always kind of looked at as a St. Clair County community. And Sheriff Tony Wickersham agreed with me when I called him and said, hey, I think we're going to have a school resource officer. I worked with the, the chief there who just couldn't get the position filled and we had that, it started in the fall. So that's it in a nutshell. I hope it didn't take too long. I wanted to paint a picture of some things that we're proud of that were moving forward. There's many more things to come and just kind of give an overall view of what it's looked like for us over the last year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure there is quite a few.
Okay.
Before we start with our woes and our questions, we want to tell you, Ms. USP, how very grateful we are that you called in special teams of divers to find our lady Moses and to give her family some rest and a chance to breathe and know what happened to her. We've been looking and looking and you saw it for us and we're very grateful for that.
We, we talked about that case every day, probably, to be honest, about the third day in, I said, okay, what's going on, right? She hasn't showed up. We thought we'd find the car parked somewhere. We hoped early on she'd be confused. Unfortunately, in our line of business, we have to look at, to go picture sometimes and we knew pretty soon that, okay, this is probably going to be recovery, but the car was never found. So early on, we had the theories he was in the water somewhere. Because cars don't just disappear. And, and I might speak too frank here, but it wasn't a twenty twenty-one Maserati or something, you gotta have that car, right? That car's going to show up. Our dive team and our marine division and our detective bureau searched and searched and searched. And that group came in and we searched that area, but there were freighters there. We found out later that that's why the car was smashed. The family was so grateful and, and it sounds weird saying nice to work with, they were, they were just, they were salty to hear of people, which put that much more pressure. Not that I wouldn't work hard for anybody, you know what I mean? It's just kind of tug at your heartstrings and we were happy that we were able to find it. We're happy the professionalism of that group, they called us, we, we talked to them. We talked to them. They're great people. They were leaving our community going down to Columbus, Ohio, Columbus, Columbus or Cleveland, but in Ohio. We were so happy to, I've never been so happy to be off doing my own thing on a Saturday and have to go into work, you know? Because we knew that, and I talked to the family members, the sort of detectives. They're like, we understand what's going on. We just want to lay your next to bed. And thank God that they were able to disenclosure.
Thank you very much. Very much indeed. All right, let the complaining begin.
Speeders, got it.
Okay, yeah, I, well, let me give you a background. I worked 22 years with the city. 12 as a tree trimmer and, I mean, 10 as a tree trimmer and 12 in EMS. And I was part of the special response team as a medic. Then I went out to La Bona. I spent 22 years out there as a firefighter medic and then on their special response team. So I've been involved with the police department and the medic department and the fire department. So when I hit you up about the speeding, I know when it's going. I know when you're flying. Biggest thing for us is that, since they paved the road and are doing a construction down at County Line at 26, is that the big trucks are using my as their cut through. And I know the speeding is above what they're supposed to be doing. But there's a lot of times where you're out there cutting your grass, you're out there treating your mail, and a vehicle comes by, and even if there's nobody in the other lane, they stay in their lane and they don't even slow down. I think that's a lot harder for you to try to see where you could catch somebody unless you're sitting there watching somebody out at their mailbox and a guy just zip by them. But it's really getting dangerous to be on that road, especially if you're trying to maintain it front of your property. And that's the only reason why, when I found out that you brought that, I brought it up. Like I said before, I know the state police have been on here. I know they hide at the church, and I know they hide down by the golf course. So I know where they hide. And I talked to them, just like I talked to Sheriff Spence. I'm pretty tight with parish sheriff with Spence. We talked to them, and I think there's another officer. But I never see, other than your car coming through there on the lights and sirens, probably going to the old Americana for a problem or an accident down at it. I never see one of your spell cards sitting there or picking. I mean, I'm not there all the time to see how many tickets they're writing or that you rent tickets. And they could be, but it just.
Well, I'll tell you, first of all, I grew up on Waddamstow, Grashit, and the trucks going by. I don't know if it was you or you were talking about motorcycles going by, I think it was you, sir. And I feel your pain because it was the same thing. Those trucks went by so loud, so fast, and you were talking about the motorcycles. And I remember standing with my dad one day as an adult, and a cafe bike went by, one of the fast ones. And he's like, he'll never make the curve. And it was a fatal crash. I mean, you know, so I feel your pain. I might want to make excuses, but I'll say this. The sheriff's office takes about 98% of the calls in the county. So they're very busy, but we have a secondary road deputy that's nothing but traffic. And I've got your notes written down. And I take that seriously because it's got to, if you can't be safe at home, and if they don't know we're out there. You know, and I'm not trying to accuse all truckers, but in general, if people think the police aren't going to be there.
There are good ones out there. There's tons of good ones. I've seen some who slow down when they can't get over or they go. But there's a few of them that just, they just pedal to the metal. And they got to make that run to that gravel pit and then back up there. I know they're coming down out of Richmond, down County Line.
Do you know what companies? Because sometimes getting ahead of it and going and making a phone call and saying, hey, listen, I'm getting your name on your, the name on your truck.
I can get a couple of the names, but I'd probably relay it to you. You want us to, you want me to give you the names or you want me to?
Yeah. You're there. And meanwhile, I'll have some special attention, gave you that area. But I'm telling you, if I can call the owner of ABC Trucking, whatever it is, and say, listen, I was at a township meeting and they named your truck.
I know you guys are happy to be all over, but like I even told Spence, hey, park your car. My driveway is pretty isolated where it's fenced on it. So you could sit there in my driveway. I have no problem with that.
I'll have Deputy Spence also get with our commercial motor vehicle division because we have two deputies that all they do is commercial motor vehicles.
Yeah, just tell them Dennis, the fireman.
You can definitely make some money off the County Line Road Advisor.
Yeah, County Line.
You can probably make half your budget off those two roads.
Yeah, because like I said, the one day I talked to the truther Jennifer, I think her name, and we were talking, and I know her pretty good. And she said she caught about two weeks ago, she was at the church parking lot, I caught the guy in a car coming down at 103 miles an hour. And I know the jet bikers, I'm a biker, so I know the guys on the jet bikes. They like the, you know, that's a straight line there. You know, I always just see them go by and I think, well, I wonder if they'll get the mail from them.
Right, yeah.
I actually have three questions based on the subject matter you've brought up. The first one with the schools, I know the DARE program had been eliminated or downsized, eliminated.
Yeah, there's no DARE program anymore, really. I mean, we call our school resource officers, school resource officers, programs they run in there similar to DARE, but not necessarily the DARE program.
So is it one officer for the whole county or per district or?
So we, so the school district, for instance, Memphis School District pays for that deputy. So it's a contracted position. We have a deputy in Anchor Bay High School as well. So Anchor Bay Schools pays for that deputy. And then we have a deputy in Port Huron Schools as well. And we work with two Port Huron officers. So they have three because their district's so big. One's a deputy and two are Port Huron police officers.
Is that how DARE was funded in the past when we had DARE?
Yeah, you know, to be honest, the DARE was so long ago. I think there were some grants out there, but I'm not exactly positive.
There was a grant. I'm very sure.
Okay, so I would like to, in that subject matter, I volunteered at Bell River Elementary for eight years as a lunch buddy. And I would see the Marine City officers come in to have just, and even if it's just a few minutes, to be a positive face and to interact with the kids so that, because sometimes they, the children have learned from their parents to be afraid of police. And so even though that program isn't, had not been in place, that I would see them there and that is blessing.
And our deputies are encouraged to do that. If I check my daytime general patrol deputies who don't have special assignments, they're checking in. Unfortunately, the last year and a half, they're not because of COVID. And I hate to say, and words like the biggest swear word ever. But they're not really welcome in there. But again, I'm just painting a picture of what's going on. But before that, and when this lets up, yeah, they'll go in, they do a walk through, go interact with the kids at lunch. And, you know, we like to be a part of those programs because like you said, we're having a hard time hiring. You know, we need some of those young kids to want to be us someday. And if nothing else, we want them to know who to go to when they need help, you know? We're talking about anything, right? Most kids that are hurt are hurt at home or at relatives' house. And if they already don't like the police, where do they go? So, you know, those are great points. And we do try to participate in those as much as we can, push the right now, the rules upside down, so.
Okay, second subject. You spoke about the wellness program for your officers. Is there also taken into consideration that, like, as you said, you know, way back when, suck it up, pull yourself up by the bootstraps, what's your problem, you know? And if there is that, for lack of a better word, macho mentality, then somebody who says, yeah, I do need help, are they going to be laughed at?
So I'm glad you asked that. So I didn't go too much into detail, but we have the ability for people to talk to peer support. And there's confidentiality there, or talk to professionals. And we don't, we should never know unless they want us to know, right?
Completely confidential.
Yes, and that's why the app's great because they can look up names, they can look up articles, they can look up help. And the sheriff's office will never know that, you know, Deputy B talked to this counselor that was, you know, listed on, there's the listed counselors and peer support. So we got professionals and then people in law enforcement that they can trust. And the plan is actually eventually have people from law enforcement from other agencies and maybe even out of the county. So they can talk to that law enforcement officer that they feel comfortable talking to, but they'll never see on a call. So we, it's a very important part of the plan, is confidentiality. So I've got 20 years on our SWAT team, nine years on our drug task force. Kind of that guy like, let's get to work. But people also know I wear my heart on my sleeve. I'll talk to you all day about this stuff. So when your leader is the guy that was on the SWAT team for 20 years, but also the guy saying, hey, I've seen a counselor and I'm proud that I'm smart enough to know I don't know everything and I need to get some things in order, right? I tell my guys that, and that's the truth, so.
That's a pretty heavy message.
Yeah, and if you need a counselor or you see a friend that needs help, those are the hard conversations that have to be made. You know, it's easy to be tough or act tough because nobody's that tough, right? Let's see how manly you are when you can stand up and say, hey, none of us are perfect. Let's talk about this. Let's make sure you're good at home and at work. And, you know, we joke in law enforcement, if you're still in the pension program, like I want to bankrupt the pension, right? I want to be 104 years old when I die. So, and that starts with mental health, stress levels, things like that. So that's very much considered, yes.
Awesome. Okay, third one. You mentioned a partnership with CMH for the inmates?
Yes, they're a mental health provider in the jail.
I moved here a little over 10 years ago as a licensed, a state licensed mental health therapist. And I called the jail here and offered to volunteer as a therapist. And I was told, yeah, we don't do it that way.
Well, hopefully it was a better message and smoother message than that. If not, I'm sorry. But frankly, okay, but we don't. So when you're talking about organization our size or any law enforcement organization, the health and wellbeing of our inmates is on me, right? So if people call up and just want to come in and help, that's great and we understand it. And people do that through our clergy program. But the mental health part, you know, and you could be totally up the snuff, but licensing, insured, connected to the programs, accountability. We have to have staff there these hours. So the volunteer program really doesn't work. Because if they talk to you and then, you know, for whatever reason, they can't connect with you again because you have life going on, and then they're supposed to talk to somebody else, they're starting over, it just doesn't work that way.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate your willingness to help, but there's just some things we got to have a little more recognition.
So are there any volunteer programs that, you know, you see on TV, like, you know, the inmates learn to train dogs that were in the shelter and it helped, you know, helped rehabilitate them in that way or just different, different things? Is there any volunteer program there or no, for those reasons?
So our Forgotten Man Ministries, which is actually, I think I had it on here, I'll have noticed it, but we've improved our spiritual connection with our inmates with the bigger group, and they're also connected. So when they leave, they can go talk to those pastors when they're, when they're outside our facility. So they have that connectivity outside the jail. I talked to the Forgotten Man Ministries, they have a lot of volunteers that come in. I always say, and I don't know if you guys can recollect the same thing, but I've never heard a story of somebody turning their life around when it comes to crime and/or drugs without some kind of, and I don't want to get too preachy, but without some kind of spiritual connection to it. I've never heard a story of like, I quit heroin and, you know, I'm all better now without some kind of connection to a faith-based industry or faith-based mindset. So it's very important for them to have that connection when they leave. Because our goal is, no, I live here, I don't want addicts walking around. And quite frankly, unfortunately, some of these epidemics have gotten so big, I think just about everybody in this room knows somebody who's got an addiction program to something. We don't want our family members addicted. We don't want our neighbors addicted. I don't want somebody stealing from them, right? All that goes together. So that's the biggest, that's probably our only really volunteer. They're vetted and they have schedules. And if they can't keep schedules, then we have to talk to them like, hey, listen, these guys are depending, guys and gals are depending on you. So that would be our volunteer group.
Thank you.
I know half the people are hoping there's no more questions so we can end it.
Short comment. I'm so glad to hear about your employee assistance program. My wife and I helped negotiate a program like that at the State University a long, long time ago. Helped me quit smoking and saved so many people's jobs because people get in trouble, they get in trouble at work, and there's an out. They can get help and do their job. So it's good that you do.
I just wanted to thank you and everybody that works with you for your service and protecting all of us and everything you do.
Yes.
Well, and I went to a mass on 9/11 and I've said this a thousand times before I even thought about running for sheriff. We're blessed here in law enforcement, this kind of support. Not everybody's going to agree with me, and I'm not going to agree with everybody. But at the end of the day, there's nobody trumping the drum about defunding. I drive up and down the road and I see these signs that say, hey, it's not, it doesn't matter what time of year, we pray for and support our law enforcement. It's a community effort. If we don't trust each other and work together, the community's probably not going to be a safe and nice to live in. And we don't have a very good working, you know, environment. So we appreciate the support. Every time something bad happens, Ferguson, if you will, or what happened in Minneapolis, my brother's a road patrol deputy. We're best friends, right? So we'll talk off work and he's like, you know, every time something like this happens, I see those poor officers in other cities and states catching grief. And he says, I can't buy lunch. Every time I hit a drive-through, somebody in front of me is buying my lunch. And he's like, it's, we really appreciate it. We feel awkward sometimes, like, hey, listen, thanks, but you know, kids are whole, you know, all freebies. But really, it's like, yep, we're pretty lucky here, but thank you for that.
A question. I noticed some of the communities have contracts. Is that where you have a card on their 24 hour?
Yes. Well, so, so he's trying to China share a deputy, and there's 12-hour protection. Most of them have 24. Port Huron Township, Port Grashit Township, Alwinac have several because they're bigger, more densely populated. Now, they're, they have to because they're incorporated or a city, and you guys are on board, you understand that, so. So, yeah, that's how that works.
I see.
I don't know if you heard about the incident that happened in our township where some man was shooting a high-powered rifles. And we almost lost one of our residents. His wife was sitting in the living room, a high-powered rifle, a shot. And she just happened to stand up and go into the kitchen. If she hadn't got out, she would have been dead. What can we do to get these high-powered rifles out of these people to make them understand you can't just shoot these kind of rifles in a township? They have to be, take them someplace safe.
Well, so we're bound by the laws that are written. And the laws that are written are saying, you know, they have to have a backstop, acceptable backstop. Of course, that's always the debate of this, right? I mean, what is an acceptable backstop? So we can't just say you can't have a high-powered rifle.
I know that.
But obviously, if they don't have the proper backstop, then there's criminal charges that are filed.
I know they did take out the people's rifles. The state police took care of them and are looking into it further. But what do I tell my residents? I mean, another person, he was out cleaning this pool, went in and there was a hole in this pool. I mean, people.
It's frustrating.
Really?
I believe in freedom of bear arms, we have to be responsible. Because also now it's a criminal act, right? And if you're not being, same as your car, right? If you're not handling your car properly, it can be a criminal. Obviously, guns have more potential for injury and death and criminal acts if they're in the wrong hands. You know, I guess, you know, what I would say to do the first step is to realize you're not going to take the gun. So let's talk to the citizens about, hey, let's talk about proper backstops. This is not more a problem here. We put out a newsletter, have it at the board meeting, and really have a campaign about.
What is a proper backstop?
So that, right.
So you're telling me somebody can take and just fire their guns off half the day is what you're insinuating? With the backstop, with the guns now?
Right, so, so I see you're mad. I didn't write the, I didn't write the law, so don't be mad at me. I can't just enforce a law that doesn't exist. We are bound by the law. Believe me, there's a lot of times where I'd love to just enforce a law that doesn't exist because it needs to be done, but I can't, right? That's judicial system. We are enforcement, we're not law writers. If they have the proper backstop, now the township can put hours on firing.
And I believe I do have that.
Things like that. But if they have the proper backstop and they're not too, there's laws, like they can't be, you know, 150 feet from your house and doing it, right?
We're not a public shooting range half the time. I mean, don't get me wrong, we all shoot our guns off for deer hunting, scope them in.
And scope them in.
Exactly, that's fine. But when somebody's sitting out there for a half hour, hour, pops them off nonstop, that's pretty rude. Especially when they come in from Detroit and says, well, the owner gave me permission to come here and shoot my gun. Go to a shooting range in New York. Somebody come out Sunday afternoon, nonstop going at it.
I agree with you 100%.
And then when you go there and talk to them, it's pretty much go pound salt.
Well, the ones that live in Hessen are coming from Detroit, but they're shooting for, from like four. Well, the ones that live in Hessen are coming from Detroit, but they're, they're shooting for, from like four or five.
Oh, yeah.
You know, a straight hour.
Yeah, yeah, but that's just, you, you come home, oh, you.
I'm just saying.
I know, I know people would call you, but what's the DNR's law on shooting anytime? Do we have a DNR rep law here?
Yeah, there's DNR officers here, but it's, it's the same. And it's, we, we operate under the same law.
Okay, yeah, but I, sometimes they have a little bit more authority.
If it's private property, it's private property.
Well, I know it's private property, I know we have problems.
That's basically what I said, it's commercial, it's commercial, we're really doing it on a commercial.
If it's.
It's a business, two businesses.
If they own the property, it's their property. When I say private, I mean like state land, there's some laws that are, during hunting season, you can't just walk there and fire them.
What it's not, the owner doesn't even know about it, it's their employees, and the owner don't even want to address the issue.
Well, then I guess they got permission.
That's what I'm saying, the owner gave you permission to come out from Detroit and target practice for a half hour here. Now, that's pretty annoying, on a Sunday afternoon.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, on 26th Church Road, you got Cameron Cole and another business down the street, non-stop doing it. I've gone over there, talked to them, you know, in fact, the DNR's been over there, because the tree line on my property, they actually see buckshots coming out of, out of the trees, and I got livestock and, and horses back there. They don't care, well, they say, well, call the cops, well, by the time you guys show up.
Well, then we could tell them they need the backstop.
I think.
They do have backstops, yeah.
But they're resonating.
Well, then, when it's something dark out, early, a couple days ago, in the morning, non-stop.
Let's say in daylight, 7:15.
Well, so, my, my question is, is it rude because of the sound hours?
Yes.
Is it rude because of the sound?
No, we have.
It's an echo, it's actually an echo coming from there, when they shoot from 26, towards this way.
We are the first, we are the first house.
Huh?
So when they're shooting.
Okay, so, it's the sound?
No, it's not the sound, it's annoying, we have animals out there, 7:15, it was still dark out.
Okay, I was just asking for clarification, because, you know, some people's roosters can wake people up at 5 o'clock in the morning.
Going, it's, it's.
We don't have a noise ordinance.
Yes, let's.
Believe me, I wish I had a better answer for you, but I can only operate in the law.
Right.
We talk about what we can do, I think some educational stuff out there, so, that, at the very, and, and, you know, maybe the township could talk to the property owner of these businesses, but as far as in general, to make sure, hey, we can't stop people shooting legally on, on property that they have permission to or they own it, obviously unless they're a felon, things like that, which you all know. But let's educate people on what's a proper backstop, and you can, you can Google that, we need, we need. While, and then you're going to talk about the board, get with your attorney, I've been down this road before, tried to write laws, and I tried to see how it's enforceable, through your enforcement.
But they're not even in castle, they're in Lennox, because you got iron on one side of the road, and they're on the other side of the road. So, it's like, I gotta go to Lennox now and complain to them, to go see their, them, about it?
Well, it's kind of, if they have a, maybe, I don't know, we can, can you put times in?
We have time with them.
Well, I'm just saying, if Lennox has an ordinance, you have to find it from that, so if you have an ordinance, if you have an ordinance that you can't shoot from until 9 o'clock.
Well, that falls under the noise ordinance, doesn't it, the shooting noise?
We have, we have.
Well, we have the same problem at, at the quarry on 26, they were doing it, and they quit. They, employees thought they could do it, but they, they quit. The other, on the other opposite side, right, like you said, private property, we can do it.
Okay.
But a half hour, an hour at a range is nothing, I mean, I, I was a sniper in the army, I'll go out there, that's my meditation. I'll go out there and I'll spend an hour out there in the range.
If you come home.
And put 200, 300 rounds down range.
We can talk all day long.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Yeah, but it gets annoying when you're trying just to relax.
If there's an ordinance that.
I understand, but I, I'm just saying, I would.
You can't shoot until 9 o'clock, and someone's out there shooting at 7:00 in the morning.
Then you're going to call the.
Do you call your ordinance officer?
No, you call.
Do you call you?
About time they get here to go.
If you're hunting in the morning, you're going to sit at 7:00.
Alright, so, if I could answer his question, please.
Go ahead.
So, with, with ordinance like that, we'll help the investigation, but the ordinance officer will write the ticket. So, we'll go out, gather the information, get the information to the, the board or the ordinance officer, and they'll, they'll go out and issue the ticket. That's how it works.
So, that's how it works, okay.
And, and the reason for that is, you can imagine our deputies trying to keep up with each township's ordinances and.
And the judge is going to tell you, you have to give him at least a couple warnings.
Well, I'm just saying, but you've given them a couple warnings.
Yeah, you got to give them a couple warnings before you give them a citation.
Once you have the warnings, now you have the information, you've investigated, you've been out there two or three times or four times. It's just like, the building department gives somebody an ordinance two or three times, and they haven't complied, and then you take them to court.
Then what's the sense of posting your property? If they're going to get warned?
Well, that's, that's, I think that's, if it's your property, and somebody's trespassing, that's not an ordinance. That's a state law that will come and enforce. You tell somebody, get off my property, they're out of your property, we'll come.
If they're on your property, then that's.
If I hear on field cam.
Yeah.
On my property, now, what does that mean to the police, under the law, what's going to happen?
So, you get a field cam of me on your property, okay? Now, okay, that's Matt King, right, we, we see that, we, we're able to identify it. Now, law enforcement are going to go say, hey, listen, you've been trespass, is what we call it. You're being told, don't ever go on that property again, if you're on that property again, we will issue a warrant to arrest you. The reason for that is, you can put a million signs up, and all you've got to say is, no, I didn't see the sign, I walked over here, I was, you know what I'm saying? And that might actually be the truth, right, if you're walking around in the woods, or, or maybe not, I'm just saying. So, it's the same as, kind of the same as a store, right? Somebody's in the store that's not wanted, because they keep stealing from you, you've been trespass, don't come back. Now, it doesn't matter if you steal or not, you come back to the store again, you're going to get arrested, so that's, that's how that would work.
So, to enforce trespassing, would it be the same whether the signs are up or no signs?
Yep.
So, you don't have to have a sign in order to.
No, as long as you can identify that person with a warning, yeah.
Right, right.
There's no such thing as free property around here, everybody owns.
I don't, I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but I know you guys have business and.
Yes, thank you very much.
I work at the sheriff's office, so if you have more, you can get ahold of me there. I wish I had a better answer for you, but I don't write the law, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for you, you're so a veteran.
Yeah, don't say that, I said, I will ask myself.
Next on the agenda, under new business, is a approval of our farmland redone rental agreement with Robert Campok for the park property of $3,022.
I make a motion to rent that park property again for another year to Mr. Robert Campok for the amount $3,221.
I'll support that.
When is the determination on the wetlands going to happen?
On what?
Apparently, there's an issue of wetlands, and that influences what he can farm, I should have planned.
Well, we can only farm so much because.
But there's, isn't there an open issue?
It's just, I'm curious depending what energy.
What lands?
Yeah, when is that going to resolve, you know, I'm just curious.
Whenever they get around to it, I suppose.
It's part of our lease, it's, we own that.
Well, I know, it's all wooded anyway, I don't think he could do it. And I think wetlands are protected forever.
I've had experience in the past, and they have said that if there are cattails wherever.
I'm sorry, but this is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The board.
I'm sorry.
Did have a determined time.
I'm just curious about, since there's a determination due out there, and I read the agreement, I'm just curious when that would might happen.
I don't know, because usually it's done, my wetlands was determined from the air.
Was this done in the last agreement I remember?
Yeah, what, yes, oh, yes.
I don't have a following with it on this.
Yeah, yeah.
We've always known that, you know, X amount was tillable, and then there was a, a question of some marshy property, and then there was woods, so, we only started to pour the tillable land.
He's maintaining that land, it's not.
Okay, alright, motion by Stover is supported by Stevens, and it will be a roll call vote.
Daddy.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Our roll call vote, our.
Colleen.
Colleen, I'm sorry. Can't forget our Colleen, I just don't want to forget the ending. Our roll call votes are yeses, motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is a hiring of Robert Osterman as our electrical planner. Plan reviewer. I make a motion to hire Robert Osterman, he will do a wonderful job for us.
I'll support.
Okay, he reviews it, but still Bob goes.
Bob will do, be doing all the other stuff. Motion by Allo Green, supported by Anderson, and. Does this thing to be roll call?
Yes.
Yes, it does, this will be a roll call vote.
Daddy.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes, I bid you for Colleen. Our roll call votes are yes, motion carries.
What's the cost?
It'll be $140, and if needed, $40 per hour. Okay, next on the agenda is one C, to approve, there's three parts to this one.
I see the first one for the plumber, oh, I see electrical, gotcha.
No.
Oh, I see it. $140 and $40 per hour for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing both, oh.
Yeah, because we just hired him, but that, it'll be for the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, for their plan reviews.
When was the last time we upged fees for?
A long time. I think, I started in 94, I don't remember, I've never.
Yeah, we did before, but you, I think it's been several years.
Like when?
I don't know, I think maybe when Karen was school.
A huh, okay.
I, I can't.
I mean, they're making $50.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's time to raise.
No, for sure.
Oh, I'll start greasing.
Yeah, you're right, probably when Karen, you're right, which was 94, when I started.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, do we do these separately, a motion, or?
No, there are one, two, and three.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, we're doing one, two, and three.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the plan fees for electrical, mechanical plumbing, $140, and $40 are required.
Yeah, that's right.
This is for one C.
One, C1.
Or C1, I should say, excuse me.
We hired, we just hired Mr. Osterman, who's going to be the electrical planner.
So, yeah, we're, so.
So, so the rest of our planners need to get the same amount of monitoring money, okay?
That's what C1 is.
Can we do this as one motion, all of these amounts, and?
No, they're different.
Have to be separate?
They're different amounts.
There's more than one amount, even in number one, and there's two amounts in number two, and two amounts in number three, so.
But they're for different kinds of things.
I make a motion for the, the fees that are involved in C1.
Right, support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover, for one C, for plan reviews for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, for $140 and $40 per hour when one required. Roll call vote. Yes.
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 All roll call votes are yes, motion carries. Next is approve increase for residential building inspection fees to $75, and all admin, all administration and zoning fees to $125. These will all take effect on November 1st. Give us enough time till everybody.
Okay, so.
Okay, motion by Stover.
Support.
Stevens. Okay. Supported by Goldston. Will be a roll call vote.
Daddy.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
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 Our roll call votes are yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is for our commercial industrial building inspections to 100, and admission, administration fees will be $200.
I guess the motion's in order?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to approve increasing, to approve increasing commercial industrial building inspections to $100, and administration fees for the same, to $200, effective 11/1/21.
I'll support.
Motion by Goldston, supported by Anderson, to approve commercial industrial building inspections to 100, and administration fees 200, effective 11/1/21. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
All, okay. All roll call votes are yeses, motion carries. I wrote it down, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval for Philip's sign to come in and sign and lighting to install our park sign for 11/02/61.
I'll make a motion to approve the Philip's sign and lighting to install the park sign for $1,102.61, excluding permit fees.
I'll support that. It'll be a roll call vote.
Daddy.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All roll call votes are yes, motion carries. Okay. I had given the, this united way in your packet before for FYI, and Mr. Brent Fullet called me about it, so this is why it's in our packet. So, it says that we can use some of our stimulus money to give them support.
So, we're supposed to return them now, or?
Yes, it's up to you guys. What they use, 2-on-1, it can be used all over to call for services, like if you need, you know, a doctor, and you're in a different place, or stuff, you know. So, it's up to the board, I told them I would give it to the board. Okay.
Really, did he?
No.
I'd like a little, to know a little bit more, I looked on the internet about, I didn't know about 2-on-1, but it did sound like kind of a robust service, if you call 24 hours a day, get referred to all kinds of different agencies to help you with whatever problem you've got.
Right.
Mental health.
Right.
Alcoholism, whatever, that was my impression.
That's, that's exactly what it is.
So, do you know what particular COVID-19 stimulus grant you're regarding?
The money you were getting.
That's the next question.
He said, the money that we're getting from COVID, that we could use that money for?
That's still out there, isn't it? That's coming in, possibly.
It's pending.
There's that.
Yes.
A lot.
Really, pending. So. you know, cause this is why I just put it in your packet as FYI, cause I figured we can donate.
So really, we probably need to approve it at the time we actually have funds and for certain.
Did he say that he needed it?
I don't think we want to give a blanket, uh, our block.
I totally agree.
And I think we should look at, hey, you know, what's appropriate to do?
Does someone just make a, um, a motion to approve it and then?
I wouldn't approve it, but I would just table it, uh, put table it until the money. What can you do to it?
Postpone it.
Postpone it.
Oh, sorry, that's not the right term, but, yeah, postpone it until we know what monies we may get, we don't know if we're gonna get any, right? And then we get them out and appropriate them out at the time, we can avoid it up or down.
I'll postpone it until our money's coming.
There's nothing to give them right now anyway.
Let's give them one, like one, not two minutes, postpone it for.
Let's postpone it.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we postpone the issue until we know for certain that we have monies that we might consider giving to the United Way for two one nine.
I would say like give them, like a, do we do it in December, bring it back to the table in December this?
Well, you might expect to, to.
I don't know.
I guess I wouldn't see it coming back to the table unless we get some money, cause then it's, it's a moot point. No money, no, no.
But it's a proposal and yet rather.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Let's postpone it for two months.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So we can bring it back, and if we still don't know, then we can postpone it more?
Sounds good.
Yeah, postpone.
Until December?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
To December.
I'll amend my motion to, uh, make the motion.
I'll support that.
Okay. Hopefully somebody will write that out in a sense.
Just Vicky got that, she'll write it out.
Thank you, Vicky.
You supported it?
I have.
Okay. Motion by Goldston to postpone, um, United Way, the use of a portion of township state COVID stimulus, stimulus grant funding, um, till December. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, motion carries. Okay. That's on agenda. Okay. Is to approve lawn and cemetery lawn maintenance. Who do you want? I was. And the more, no, I can do that.
We got the three quotes, isn't it?
Three quotes. Do you?
I, I have a general issue with these quotes. First of all, I mean, it's just a matter of how we proceed with them. It's not easy to compare apples and apples.
They do, I'll do it.
But that's been, that's been a problem with lots of things, but we're spending a lot more money on improvements and getting a lot more quotes. And I think we should have at least some kind of a specification of scope of work that goes out with the quotes and the method we want them to quote it as. We want them to quote basically the items that everybody did quote, but in a, in a organized manner and in the same manner each one. And not have it all over the map like these are, cause these are good examples of the way not to do it. So if you have a, a scope of work, and you can also, I'm not saying we need to do all of this all at once, but I think we need to start sending a scope of work for all of the major quotes that we send out so that we can compare apples to apples. We also have some things that have come up repeatedly, and that's purpose compensation insurance, liability insurance, things that we require and need to have to get the township when we make a request for a quote. And I think we should include that in the, uh, the, the scope of work statement that we're asking them to quote on. It's not that difficult to do all those things, I think the attorney can help us, and it will cost a fortune to just set up something that works that way.
Attorney.
Well, usually you wanna ask for the things that you want in a way that, maybe you don't need an attorney to do that.
I don't think we do.
But, um, I'll tell you, at Wayne State, this is not a good example, but it's a very big institution, it's very particular about how you quote, how you accept quotes to protect yourself against collusion and coordination of quotes. You really have a number of things that you want to avoid, you don't want to get two, uh, entities quoting larger amounts because they talk to each other. You know, that, and so you need, you ask them not to, to certify that they did not do that. And you ask for the kind of insurance that you want right out. You can also, in certain situations, find it appropriate to ask for qualifications, because we've run into problems where there, maybe the people quoting aren't exactly qualified to do the job. I'm not saying you need to ask for that for lawn care, but for some things you might want to ask for that. And I think we should look, I don't know all at once, but look into doing it in a more, um, organized manner and consistent manner. Apples and apples, oranges, oranges, same kinds of requirements for insurance, and have explicitly stated what you want. Cause I guess I have an underlying concern, as we do more of these things and as time goes by, it's a litigious society, and if you have folks that think they've been treated unfairly because they didn't get the job, which they really wanted and were competing for, um, they have recourse, and I think you wanna try to set it up so that you are fair and show that you're fair. In a big lecture. I did a lot of this, and, um, I sometimes ran into problems with general consultants, and they said, you gotta do something different there, or purchasing department, whatever. You don't agree? I'm sorry, it's not mine to recognize somebody you're going.
But.
I, I agree, but we're just a small entity.
Yeah.
Like, you know, if it's someone who is just like a small business, I don't, I don't know.
No, I, I.
I don't know that it's always necessary to do that, but I mean, if you look at these quotes, they're just.
I agree with the quotes.
I, I started adding up the numbers, and I just, it was hard to get something that you could compare with these guys.
I agree, especially on these, I agree.
I agree.
It's not a lot of money here, but still.
It was hard to figure out, though.
Then we want to be fair.
Right.
We want to have the people that bid on these things be, be a fair, a fair competition.
But they're not in collusion, I know they're not.
I mean, my, my.
That's not the question, it's that we want, I want to be able to feel that we awarded it to someone who bid fairly, um, you know, who bid a low price for the township with reasonable specifications, are gonna do the job.
Right.
And that the other guys that didn't get it, or whoever, other people,
Yeah, but you.
did not, were not, um, excluded because we couldn't compare them actually.
Yeah, to look at the prices, though, and the amount of times it come out here, D and E looks like it was.
That's what I'm looking at. Well, then let's go with D and E.
D and E, they do St. Michael Cemetery in Richmond, and they do a fantastic job. They had it, the contract, this was the first year they had it there in the cemetery.
All right, then.
So this starts next here?
Spring cleanup. All right. Then make it in a motion here.
Okay, I make a motion that we hire D and E landscaping, starting next spring with the spring cleanup, with the amounts listed on the, um, the quote here.
Can I? I have to be on the other.
Sure.
Are we going with it weekly, biweekly? I personally think we need to do weekly at the hall, and probably biweekly at the cemetery.
Well, they said, um, approximately at the year twenty-six.
Yes, yes, if that's for, see how I have a cost here? Biweekly, seventy-six, sixty-seven, or weekly, fifty-three, so I think they call it as a weekly.
I see.
For both of them.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that.
I just, I don't think we need to do the cemetery every week.
No, we don't.
Um, okay, so the weekly cost at the, um, township, uh, and biweekly at the cemetery.
I'll support that.
Roll call.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes? Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
All roll call votes are yeses, motion carries. Next on the agenda is early bird Earl's snowmobile contract. And it has gone up this year because I did call him to let him know that, um, he is gonna have to do both the back and the front, cause our tarverage is now in the back. Um, when I talked to him, what she wants me to call him tomorrow, if you want me to, I'll have him send another one over. Putting on here that he knows he has to do the back and the front driveway.
Yes, and I know we talked about it too, but I want to reiterate, he needs to shovel like.
Sidewalks.
Right, and it has to be like early enough.
And the timeframe, okay, well.
And it's easier to plow with one of these.
And let him know that we come in the office, well, one at eight thirty, okay?
Has to be on the eight.
All right.
Good job.
There are a lot of ways between this and parking lots.
They've been pretty long before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we just have to reiterate that. Okay, I just need a motion to make this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hire early birds, Earl's at a cost of, um, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Excuse me? Oh, four seventy-five.
Yes.
I might want to stipulate that you want them here to do it early in the morning, get them off there, and also, um, you want them to do the other parking lot, we stipulate that in the motion that says.
Okay, I have one motion.
Got that?
Yeah.
Anybody support that?
I'll support.
Goldston. Be a roll.
Dan.
Dan? Roll call vote.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Callie?
All roll call votes are yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is to approve Microsoft three sixty-five business standard one-year leases. It's SA nine, and one monitor, um, for our, um, new hotel.
Building?
No, yes, for our building apartment, but the monitors for our.
Sever?
Our server, thank you.
I made a motion to approve the, um, nine, nine, um, licenses of Microsoft three sixty-five business for one year, and also a monitor for server.
I'll support that. Roll call vote.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Do we have good backup procedures for our server and our data?
Yes.
On-site and off-site too? Is there anything off-site at all? The Auburn Downers group, pardon my name, is that true?
No, I'm gonna have to take a break.
Me too. You've talked to me a few times on Facebook.
That's right.
I know I've never used the face.
All right, I'm gonna call meeting back to order, please. All right. Sorry about that. All right, next on the agenda is the quote for our, um, cemetery gravel driveway. We have, we have two different quotes, one for Mr. Grosso and from Precision Landscaping.
Well, Mr. Grosso, has he given us three different options here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cut the option.
Why is it, cause I make a motion that we hire Grosso with the crush, crushed concrete and grating for thirty-two hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, fine, for the cemetery net.
Okay.
Support.
Okay.
Which option did you choose?
Um, the crushed concrete, Grosso.
The first one.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two.
Still only crushed concrete.
All right, anybody support that?
Callie.
It was Callie.
That's just a good license.
Well, for the use of it.
Roll call vote.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes. All roll call votes are yes, motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is our quote for Tony's heating. Uh, this will go up in our hall, um, the air conditioning unit will also be a heating unit. So, we'll come in.
It'll be much more efficient.
Efficient, yes.
Do we know, um, I can't remember, did you talk to him about like when, if that, if that's a current one, he would be able to do it?
They'll, they'll put it on your, on your schedule, whatever time you like. If you need it before it goes in the walls, before the walls go up.
Yeah.
Um. Walls are up.
The walls are up, well, they'll, they're gonna have to, I mean, they do, but they're very good at it.
Well, top it, they can go in any time.
Yeah, they, they did my.
I, I'm sure they, I'm sure that, um, when the gentleman was there, Mr. Dolan was there, um, Scott Dolan, I think is his name, was their sales rep. Um, the, the crew was up there working, so I'm sure they commiserated on all of that. I just know this is a very good price.
This is gonna be, I mean, it's just gonna replace the wall units, gonna be.
Yeah, that's coming out.
Too. Much smaller, much quieter, much more efficient.
Yeah.
I had a usually good experience with Tony's, so I have no problem with Tony's, I mean, they.
They're awesome.
And their customer service is just one of the top.
They fish my cat out.
But I don't know why we don't have another quote for them, at least just for the record. But, I mean, I, I really think they're great.
Well, I'll tell you, I've been through this just recently, and I did get three quotes for myself. Randazzo's was, I mean, they're a very good company, but they're sky high. Um, and the other one, I think they were from, uh, the East Detroit area. And maybe we should have more quotes than that, but Tony's does work in this township all of the time, they're right there in Fair Haven, if there's a problem, they're here right now. Um, I've never heard of, I've never heard anybody who's had a problem with Tony's heating before.
I think for the record, that's really good to know. I'm fine with that, I don't have a problem, I just wanna make sure that there's a.
I just know that their quote was a lot less than the quote on my house, and I wanna know why.
No, they're good.
Okay. Can I have them?
The, my cat climbed onto my heating system, and it'll fish me out of there. I wish he had a present. She's with mom, she divorced.
Yeah, she divorced him, she left one to live with grandma. Okay.
Yeah, that's, so that's, um.
And they came out the very day that I called them.
I think I think foreword members have had such a good experience with them, is sufficient reason to.
Higher, right.
There's nothing unfair in that at all.
I make a motion to approve Tony's heating and cooling, um, quote for fifty-three seventy-five for the air conditioning. Support. Be a roll call vote.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. By the time it gets done, it's gonna be like a brand new one.
Roll call vote, uh, is all, roll call vote is all yeses, motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is for our, yeah, there are all aspects on this.
Yeah.
I know that Quality has a full crew and Dave only has a few workers and he's losing one, but he does do good work.
Yeah.
So.
But.
I'll go with it.
Here's my thing is Quality has their crew.
Yeah.
And like when they came into the roof, they got it done.
Really fast.
They probably had it done in one day, but they had to replace all the wood up.
Right.
But they were fast, they were very professional, the guys were very polite.
I really do, yeah, I really do like Jacob.
Yes, and Dave and his crew, they're doing this and their work, obviously, I mean, they did a great job down here.
I'm just wondering if they're fighting up too much.
I know, that's my-
That's my, only my-
Price difference.
Yeah, I know it's a price difference, but I just hope he's not fighting up too much.
Well.
But if there is, then they can, um, I, it's up to work.
When did he say he's gonna have the upstairs done?
He hasn't, I mean, they've, they've been really, they, it's dry well.
Right, I mean, we, they can even take a break from doing their, to do the outside before the weather sets.
Right, and my thing though is we're having the windows done and I think you need to do it kind of like on-site because I don't know which windows are first, but it's probably easier to do them together, you know what I mean? And those on your hat like.
Jacob said he could do it in November, I would probably, it's up to you guys. Just when those trees-
We're just throwing everything out there.
Me and her throwing things out there, you guys are the poor.
He's doing the upstairs, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I guess so.
Yeah.
I know there's a big difference in everything.
Yeah, that's something that you need to consider.
Yeah, I know.
Because we've been putting up a lot into this.
Yeah, we have.
So, yeah, I, I, I have no problem, I'm here, I'll ask questions, we'll decide.
Okay. That's fine, I'm with the board.
He's been doing good work.
He has.
Jacob, what do you think?
You guys have had no experience with these guys, and I support you.
We work with both of them.
What you like to do, if you're confident that the lower price is good, I'm confident.
Yeah, see, we're with both of them, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess if for some reason-
If something happens, then-
Like if, if Ali Aspex, if we can't get it done, we can always go back to Jacob.
You can always put those things in the specs too.
That, let's do that.
When you, when you sense something out like this, you can say, you know, it has to be done by such and such a time. And there's other things you can put in there that make it a little bit more of a punch.
Right.
But it damages, I don't think you wanna do that.
No, not that.
I think you wanna say that if it's not completed, yeah, this is the timeline that you need to do.
Well, and we've talked, you know, Mr. Van, the owner of all Aspex, he knows, he knew he had it done before the election, but-
And, and there's no, if we, if we approve it, I don't think there's anything that blocks who I was talking with him from negotiating those things into that agreement, they're not costly. But those kind of criteria are quite reasonable.
And also, also this, tell them, okay, if he's doing both, we hire them, the same, hey, use your judgment, we'd like to get the outside done before the weather sets. If Dan Crew's doing the windows, we get the siding, good, then go ahead.
Because I know he's already ordered the windows, so I don't know when they're coming in.
Get those in and then air tight and get that in because we can do that floor anytime of the stairs, you know?
Same thing with the ceiling.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, then I put what?
Yeah, okay, so I make a motion to hire all aspects at a cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the replacement, the insulated, remove the old side and replace the, the new side. I get questioned, people said, oh, the roof looks great, boy, that site looks like.
I know.
I would, you might want to put in with the proviso that he can get the job done by whatever you guys think it's important.
If he can get the job done by the first of December.
There you go.
Sounds good.
Okay, who's gonna support that?
Also working.
Okay, roll call. Roll call vote. Okay.
Daddy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Hang on, on my agenda, did I miss one? We got an under old business. Oh, gosh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I was not, yes, I did, never mind, all right. All roll call votes were yes, motion carries. Can't remember, here's how I got off track. There we go. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is discussion of one large dumpster for recycling. Kelly, you're supposed to have the information, yes?
Well, I'll tell you, we had many comments on the Casco Township Neighbors and Friends Page and other, other places about the availability of a disposal unit in the parking lot, perhaps in the fall and in the spring to help people tidy up around their places. So, there's the different options. If we were talking about removal of tires, that's, that's-
Well, that's the next one.
That's one, well, but I'm, these are all the quotes. All right, we'll put the tires up to the next.
Yeah.
IDF, who was recommended to me by J and J Disposal, will, could have for a weekend three thirty-yard dumpsters for four hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece. They, a lot of times, they leave them there for like seven days, but I can't imagine what that would look like, so.
We don't have a lot of room for that.
Yeah, so I was hoping to just do it for a, a long weekend, let's say. Now, the discussion that comes along with all of this, whether you're talking to J and J Disposal, who that actually is, or IDF, what are we talking about? Recyclables, you know? I'm thinking this is just general catch-all.
Like what?
Like if you wanted one dumpster just for steel items, metal items, they can't-
Intermix?
They can't intermix these, exactly, that's the word we're looking for. So, I wouldn't, we would have to have a specific list outside the dumpsters that says, in this dumpster goes this, 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 and this, and in this dumpster goes the metal or the this, 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 this.
Like at the dump, how they have it for recycling.
Yes, mhm. And so they could do this for us, three thirty-yard dumpsters, drop off and pick up for four hundred and seventy-five dollars per unit. And J and J could do it, two thirty-yard dumpsters, they really haven't come up with a price yet. One could be all steel and one could be a garbage pickup for one day.
What kind of garbage?
All sorts of garbage, I suppose. Don't be expecting these people to be recyclers. I don't believe for a minute that they are.
Do you mean just glass?
No, not glass.
Glass, glass.
Glass, yes, I would imagine, it'd be the same thing, cans.
Cans, or would cans go in with the steel?
Well, that's what we would have to, that's what they would have to tell us, we'd have to have two thirty-yard dumpsters, what do they want in this dumpster and what do they want in that dumpster?
Or plastic in one?
Mhm.
Or are you gonna have people just coming up and dumping trash?
Well, that's what we're gonna have, unless you wanna stand up there.
Even if they say it's recycled, right, and he's gonna come up here and watch it.
And you're gonna have to hire somebody to stay there and watch it and make sure-
Well, I need to hear a little bit from, from the audience on this.
I actually have an expert opinion on that.
Do you?
Yeah, we set them up for apartment complexes where our construction company, we set them up like that, they do it all the time. First of all, don't pay for a dumpster for steel if you want it, call Scrapyard and they'll bring you a dumpster for free. They will actually pay you for what the contents in it, if it's all steel and aluminum, so it becomes a financial gain for you. So, that's one thing. Newspapers can do the same thing, but we don't have much newspapers anymore.
No.
Cardboard newspapers, they will do the same thing, though. They will bring a, a recycling company that deals with that will bring you a dumpster for free and pay you for contents.
Now, would they take like regular paper like that?
They do. Now, the other thing that a lot of communities prefer to do, like, so when we do these with condo complexes and apartment complexes, they prefer a shred day for, and you work with some of the shredding companies, there is gonna be a fee for that.
Do you have a shredding company that works for us?
Yep, and they would come with a shred day, they give you a discount, because they, when they shred this, they sell it off by the pound. So, when they come to a shred day, community shred day for you, they collect all that, they, they sell it off, so they give you a discount on this community shred day, they'll bring the truck out to the lot. So, if you were to incorporate a community shred day with a metal recycling and then possibly include the plastic in, but you start including plastic and all the other crap, you end up with the trash.
Right.
That's one out of-
You know, but the, and we have the Casco sale, so maybe with that sale, have that on that day. Have a community shred day once a year with the Casco sale, that gets people here for everything at once. You have the shred day, you have the recycling, and it's just all one day, one controlled thing, that way you're not getting the dumpsters coming in, dumping in the middle of the night. Every time I set a dumpster down on the dump site, the neighbors all help me fill it up. You know, so, I wouldn't pay for dumpsters, I would call these companies that pay you.
Up at St. Michael's there in Richmond, we do a cemetery cleanup twice a year, we get a big dumpster. You're right, a bunch of people bring stuff in, they throw them in, and they see a big dumpster out there.
Yeah, yeah, they, neighbors will always help you fill a dumpster without fail. So, a lot of times, if I do a neighborhood cleanup, I bring two dumpsters out, because I know neighbors are gonna fill it up, and I put my company sign on it, I put my real estate company sign on it, my construction company sign on it, and say free, let them fill it up, because I know they're going to anyways, it's cheap advertising.
As far as shredding goes, I mean, I guess, I don't know, for I-
The banks do that for you, don't they? For state does it, has a customer appreciation day, North Star.
Well, living in the, I mean, now you could use it for starting my bonfire. I mean, why, why shred it when I can, for a cost, when I can burn it for free, I don't know.
When we clean our houses, people-
Well, yeah, no, your situation you put in, but I'm just thinking for a year.
Well, say, people hoard stuff, they, they don't like to burn it, I don't understand. There's a lot of people are afraid of fire.
Then you gotta, then you gotta worry about the dumpsters in there if someone's setting on a fire.
Well, not crazy people out here.
Best you go crazy guy shooting.
Are you guys just doing this to keep from having all these landfills around us?
No, I'm, I'm doing it because the residents would like, they were, they were requesting this, a fall cleanup and a spring cleanup day with these dumpsters. And there was a specific one, like I said the next thing, for tires. I mean, if I don't have to pick up another tire on Springborn Road for the rest of my life, it would be really very nice. Not that I've ever done it, but I've sent somebody out there to do it.
Rusty.
Yeah, it'd be rusty. Yes, yes, and a tire, a tire thing would be good, but I like the idea of calling a scrap yard to come and get it without paying for a dumpster.
They would pay us.
Call Basic, Basic was one, and the Richmond Recycling is up in Richmond, they'll bring out, they'll bring out a dumpster quickly because they make money on it and they'll give you-
Well, let me, let me look into this a little bit more.
Although I think, I would agree with you, the tire thing is a good thing.
Yeah.
Well, it is, and you know what else irritates the living Jesus out of me is when people are reshingling roofs and those shingles end up in a ditch somewhere. That really annoys me and-
Well, that should be the roofing people.
Well, yeah, and I'm sure it is, you know, it's catching them.
That's illegal dumping, that's actually a state fine.
Oh, I know, it is if you can catch them, but it, it's so specific that you have to see the whites of their eyes and take a picture of them dumping. You've all had people dump trash cans or garbage bags in your yard and you've gone through them and said, here's the addresses, here, no, and the police say, no, that's not good enough, somebody else could have picked that up and dumped it here. Well, all right.
I know, I know what you're talking about, because I ran, I ran into that guy that dumped that shingles in the ditch and I came back and told Bill, and Bill, I had his license number because that's all I had, it was your name and a truck.
And even with that, you know, it's hearsay.
The police, the police came out and got him and found his license number.
But I, I rather like not paying for anything and having a scrap yard come, but, and then we still have to have a dumpster for plastics and paint cans?
Paint cans go in the metal.
They go in the metal?
But the only thing with paint cans, if they got any paint in it, we can't take them.
Yeah, paint's under iron metals.
That's environmental, I wouldn't take paint cans.
So, I guess we'll have to have an environmental person out here.
So, one thing you could do is coordinate with a waste management or J and J, the waste management, especially the bigger companies, they have an outreach program that would actually design for a community cleanup day.
Yes.
They have, they have a whole team that, that's all they do is coordinate with you to have that day. And they'll work with you, they'll charge you, they may charge you a small fee, depending on how, how big you won't be anticipating, but they do have a, a team that's, all they do is work with communities to set up that day.
Would they work out here?
Waste Management's down the street. They're in, all around the Lindsay.
A hazardous disposal day would be really helpful. I mean, batteries and, and computer thing, you know, the, all those charging things and paint, those things, and it would be fantastic, I think, if it was partnered with the Casco sale, that, you know, would bring people here, it's part of helping to serve the community. But with the, the metal and recycling, I mean, I, on the sites we have, oftentimes, people take a picture of what they haul out to the road and say, hey, recyclers, hey, scrappers.
I know.
And we see the scrappers driving around on garbage day. I, I mean, I don't know.
So, shall we research this and set this up for early spring when we're going to be opening up the township sale again?
Yeah, one of my hopes for recycling was to have the weekly recycle with the little bin next to our garbage.
Oh, well, I do too, and the last time we had that discussion, you just about had to run for the hills.
Yeah, I know Columbus Township had one by, it was about ten years ago they pulled it, they said it wasn't, it wasn't working out well for them, so.
You're gonna have large volumes or-
Well, what we had to do was the last time we had this discussion, the only people that offered this was waste management. And the only way they would offer it was if we had a buy-in from the whole township. Well, that was one of those meetings that you didn't wanna be sitting there, you know? We, we got the quote and we thought we had to present the quote to the, whoever was here to say, well, let me tell you, they came out in droves to say, we're gonna, you know, have our companies to do our own and we are not, because that would mean, I don't even know how to collect that, I mean, I don't know, what do they do? Do they bill, do we bill you, do they bill you, do I put it on a tax bill? I'm not doing that.
So, they're sitting next to us?
Yes.
That's what they do? Because they have recycling.
China?
Yeah. Yeah, and it costs over a hundred and eighty grand.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, John over there, yes, they pay out of their general fund. They pay a hundred and eighty grand a year, that's, that's, you know, that's way.
Well, you, you said you have J and Js, I know we have, Jeff picks up our trash and I know he has dumpsters because it's in his little-
Yeah, and J and J does too, you know?
I don't know who the other trash-
But I'd, I'd really like this scrap idea and a hazardous waste, one, two. And so, we'll look into this more and plan it for early spring.
Yeah, you got six months of work.
Do you think we need-
No, the hazardous waste, they can take dismissed, I would rather them just take it dismissed.
Well, every, but that's what people want to avoid doing, they wouldn't be calling on us to set up something if they were willing to drive a dismissed tree.
Uh, no, I, not- Uh, no, I, not on our property. You're not, you don't want, you're gonna have to have special hazmat, hazmat stuff, it's not gonna happen.
When they, when they do that, those days, they send their people. They, they send their people that are trained in doing, in, in making sure that, that the environment, that they're processing it is, is to the standards.
How much is that?
You're gonna have.
Well, like I said, sometimes it's, it's free, it also depends on what you're accepting, and who's doing it. Like she says, for batteries and computers, that's all scrap, that actually goes, that all's, that all has monetary value. Batteries, computers all have monetary value.
Okay.
You know, so they'll pay you, so if you say, I'm gonna bring in ten tons of scrap, but only two tons of hazardous like paint or old chemicals, they may say, well, we'll throw the hazardous in with it. And they'll, you know, that, they'll take the scrap. But all this all depends, so you gotta talk to all.
People are gonna bring oil.
Yep.
This hazmat stuff.
And again, oil has monetary value, there's companies that sell the oil.
I guess you could give oil to the.
Yeah, recycled oil.
Right, right. So you're talking about like, a day within timeframe where there's actually the people here to receive it, and to handle it properly.
Once a year or twice a year?
Once a year.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Or a day.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, it doesn't sit here at night. Professional company endowed in the process like you suggest, I think it's a great idea.
You don't want nothing to be sitting here till tonight, because they'll fill it up. They'll fill it up so fast, you'll work in the morning, you'll be caught high.
Not years ago, where they have the.
We're burning.
You don't want a dumpster, find a dumpster full of asbestos or.
Get together with you on Facebook and we can talk about this more, so I can research.
Were you on some, maybe some of those numbers are interesting, you do a little research too.
Yeah, that would be great, anybody who's.
Mr. Dumpster's your hand?
Are you gonna require them to have some kind of proof that they're in a township? I mean, you know mostly everybody, but I don't want you to have to be in charge.
I don't, I, I think, keeping them in the township, opening up to other townships is not a bad thing if we're trying to get monetary value out of them.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna pay us for it.
And if professionals are running it, who cares?
Yeah, okay.
The more, the merrier, because you're making, you're making money out of it, it becomes almost a fundraising event.
Oh, well, we like those.
Yeah, you, you, the scrap you get.
We like those.
People don't wanna take a chair or a piece of steel to the scrap yard, they throw in a dumpster.
Last time I went up to dismissed creek, I was just rolling my eyes all over there.
All right, all right, all right. Well, we'll do some more research, sounds better than what we were thinking.
And as I said on this next one, um, the semi truck or recycling the tires, one, uh, two, one great big semi, uh, costs two thousand dollars a day, and you can fill it up with all the tires you want, I went, two thousand dollars?
That's just insane.
That's just insane.
I can interject a little time on that.
Yes.
We just cleaned up a property out in Hartland, my brother just bought a hundred some acres out there and cleaned it, he had over eight hundred tires on his property. It's been naked for thirty years. We called the tire recycling, they sent a truck, and they put them all in the truck, cost us nothing, other than our tire.
Yeah.
Because they took it down to Tennessee to a wood, a wood company, or a mulch company, made mulch tires.
So now they're, they're using those chips of tire for playgrounds?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I said around his house.
Or maybe we can find somebody to do all our tires for.
Well, I think, I'll talk to this Barry, I got the, the company is Environmental, it's called Environmental. And, I'll just call this Barry there and say, are you gonna charge me for this, or are you gonna make money on the tires that you're hauling away?
Well, they're gonna make money on the tires they're hauling away there.
Yeah, but are you gonna charge me for making money on the tires?
Maybe he can tell the guy that did it for, get us one for free.
They can give you that face that they have.
Yeah. Or if we're gonna have a playground in our park, we can shred those tires.
We're gonna put it in the meantime.
Could be some equipment that costs several million dollars, I'm thinking, we're not gonna buy that.
No. Our people have wood chips like we did when we were.
Right.
Yeah, rubber chips.
I'll get to the chips.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your input, I appreciate it, very much.
Very much. Okay, next on agenda, under old business, there's approval of additional cost of the handicap grant of eight seventy-five.
You added in one? On N, on.
A grail, a grail for the T S.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Got a most. Okay, but that would be next.
That's right after this semi truck.
That's after the, oh, N, I'm sorry. I'm losing my mind, yeah. All right, N. Thank you for reminding me, I lost my computer. Um, the approval, approval for, um, for, oh, hang on.
It's under, I just saw it in your presentation, to hear that. How about, keep on making.
Okay, here it is. Uh, approval for Camille and Mark LLC, um, to go to the tax tribunal for an appraisal. It'll cost, um, between eight hundred and twelve hundred dollars, I'm hoping not that much. Um, when you go to the tribunal, you've got to prove to them why we're taxing them this much.
But, okay, I just have a question, Shelley, she's a professional assessor, assesses them at this cloth, you think it should be, Camille's trying to, they didn't get the appraisal.
She, she has turned it over to a lawyer, Tuma, because this is over her head. He is telling her, telling us that we need this appraisal to go ahead.
But if.
I think this is being initiated by the tax tribunal at the state.
Yes.
So.
That's why it's out of our hands, except for.
We're gonna need it.
But if we're, if we're successful, if we prevail, can we put the cloth over?
I don't know if they do that. I hope they, believe me, Mr. Tuma and Shelley would not be asking for this if it was not needed.
Apparently the burden of proof for the assessment is on us.
Right.
We're charging them, we have to demonstrate why we're doing it.
Right.
I don't think that's.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the appraisal for Camille and Mark LLC, is that what it was?
Yes.
Um, for the amount of eight hundred and.
Eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Hopefully you'll support it. Motion by Anderson. Supported by Stevens. It'll be a roll call vote.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Well, all roll call votes were yes, motion carries. All right, now onto old business. Approval of additional cost for the handicap grant.
They just had to come out and do another coat because it was, it hadn't, I don't know if it ever had stained on it.
It was like it had.
It soaked, it soaked.
No, it never did.
It was horrible, and if you see it now, it looks amazing.
Yeah, no, it was never stained, we put it back in ninety-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, it needed.
I mean, and.
Okay, I make a, um, motion to approve all aspects painting remodeling for an additional cost of coat of the handicap grant for total cost of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll support that. Roll call vote.
Patty?
Yes.
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 Roll call vote, it's all yeses, motion carries.
It's almost like the thing I premade for you, I had your tires painted house, and I was kept smoking them.
Okay, next up to our bills. Any questions on the bills, Patty?
The, um, three thousand on the card, is that's, that's the charge card before we sold it?
Charge, yeah, yeah. Roll call, I, 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 any other questions?
I make a motion to do this today.
Do you want me to, did you want to know what was on there, you just asked?
No, no, I just wasn't sure what it was.
Yeah.
It's a little bit larger than normal because stamps were going up, so we ordered more prepaid, like a postage fee.
It's my stuff, I was, I didn't know what it was.
Support, need a support for the bills?
I'll support that.
Roll call. Okay, now.
Um, Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Roll call, well, yeses, motion carries. Next on the agenda is Susan Kama.
All right, I got one, a couple.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for the appreciation certificate that you sent me.
You're welcome.
It was wonderful working for you. Uh, second is that, um, I was, um, to the cemetery and a big white shed is gone. I was so happy when I seen it, I don't know who tore it down, but I know they had a difficult job in doing it. Uh, third is that I was here the other day when we were doing a sale, and I think the pop can up on top of the chimney is a classic.
There's a pop can in the chimney?
It's on top of the chimney when they were doing the roll.
Oh, my God.
Unless the wind blew it away.
It's the wind blew it away.
I will bring my trepidation.
I kept looking up there and I seen a grate around the chimney and a silver thing, and I finally figured out it was a pop can.
Funny.
Um, and the fourth and fifth thing, um, I know you guys are doing a tremendous job on all the renovations for the township, the township hall, but if you have a little bit extra money, the flag pole needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Uh, the flag pole, we got a nice new flag pole that we can roll up and down the flag, and the other thing is the sign.
Yeah, we're working on that, yeah.
That was right.
I couldn't even see who the supervisor was.
I hadn't thought about the flag.
There's an excellent place up, and, um, who does flag poles, it's called Flags and More up in Lakeport. She installed my flag pole, she's got a fantastic name, it's Cheryl, and she was born on Flag Day too.
It was a new segment, I have a light so.
I was just gonna say, can we get a light with you?
I know, I keep telling you, asking you, every time I come in.
That's one of my things too.
I see, I see. Flag pole, yeah, I was great working, I really appreciate the certificate. And I love the way that you did it to trees.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, first thing I noticed was all my little flowers were gone.
I know, and, and, yeah, they were so pretty, you know.
They were all building up.
They were all coming out in the fall so, so nicely.
So, but it looks, it looks wonderful, great, and I see you replaced your big vase with a tree too.
I did, yeah, because my flowers kept dying. I think we've got too hot.
And, uh, the last of that, going back to your siding, you might wanna have the guys check the siding on the township hall itself, because there were a lot of cracks and holes in it.
That's what we're, that's what we're replacing.
Oh, I thought you were saying some aluminum.
We're doing this, the hall.
No, but I'm talking about on the brand new hall.
No, we're not doing the brand.
That's what I said, you wanna, might want, you might be able to fix some of the nice big holes and cracks that are in that siding.
What siding?
Your new siding.
On the new siding, on the office siding, you know where your office is, and you're looking at the farm field?
Really?
That stuff just got holes, and then they'll used to have me go put caulk in it, to fill caulk in it.
Really?
Yes, really. I was here. They say, they say it's not the stressed siding that was put on the hall. It's real thin, and if the guy next door is doing his farming, it's accidentally, a rock could hit that siding or a bird, but it, it, there's a couple of cracks. I'll be glad to come down and show you where the rat.
Okay.
Just, just bringing up the stuff, I know you don't wanna scratch your head, but, on that, but.
Okay.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Good to know.
I just have one kind of, because when they suspended it, no, there wasn't anything underneath there. But when they, they chose a style, or could they, is there styles that can mimic a old ceiling?
I think that tin ceiling would be a little bit out of our price range. But we'll look and see.
Yeah, just ask the question.
Yeah.
If they even have panels there.
They do, they can make you any panel you want, fits in the drop ceiling. They have them look like old tin, they have them look like all kinds of, you're gonna spend some money for.
Yeah, old tin.
So whatever you wanna spend, how deep your pocket is, don't make it to the township.
And recycling demo.
Yeah.
Workup.
With respect to recycling, I was really concerned about the township getting involved in administering a recycling program, and I really appreciated your suggestions. I think it was just great.
I feel more.
Relieved my mind.
Professionals hands, and we just provide the space.
Can I comment about the vinyl siding you're doing on the building here?
No.
I noticed there's a disparity of about twelve thousand dollars in pricing, and I know you guys voted to approve the lower one.
Yes.
Quality difference of the siding, make sure you guys are comparing up the samples. Like goes back to this point there, vinyl siding is not all the same.
Okay.
There's different thicknesses, different qualities of vinyl siding. So make sure that you guys are comparing up the samples on terms of vinyl siding.
Discussing the building is paper thin.
Tomorrow, because I'm tomorrow and ask them.
It's paper thin.
Why am I not?
I asked him, I, I, back a number of times, I asked him if he had extra from the company that did it, if I could pop it out and put a new piece in, and he said, no, they took it all with them. But, but yeah, there are, there are cracks in it, and there are parts where there are punched holes or.
Cheryl, Cheryl, could go back to this point there, when they use consult, tell them to leave you an ad, what they call an attic stash, this half a box of siding for repairs, like you said, have them leave you an attic stash.
Yeah, because I can do, anybody, I can do it.
A what?
An attic stash, an attic, you know, an attic bundle, something, a box or half a box of siding for official repairs.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a quick question.
I have a good mind at home.
Can we have the computer, can we just email this? Is it something that you guys, I mean?
Making notes then.
I'm all right with that, but can you email from here?
We should have, we should have.
Yeah, we are, that's.
Oh, you should have got, you should have got the thing, carted it off, all right, hell. Yeah, would you go for, would, when you pay for a quantity, they always add a little extra? And so it's like, you paid for this, do you want it, or do you want us to haul it, like, you know, exactly.
Most of them want to. Unless you ask them for it.
But you didn't pay for it, it's not like you're asking.
My guys were trained, my guys were trained in this. Mostly address something very important.
Yeah, go ahead.
The flooding is occurring around here. We need to address that, especially on twenty-six and Church Road. The flooding is horrible there, it happens twice a year, and it all backs up from twenty-six and comes back down. I have pictures on it, I've complained to the road commission, to the drain commission. I'm here today to see if youse people will say something to the road commission, drain commission, to take care of the problem. I mean, we're not talking a, a, a little, and I know it rains, don't get me wrong, we've had a lot of rain. But when it floods like this, and the whole four or five neighbors get flooded out, we're talking an island. I will post pictures on your, on the, on the website, okay? I actually, the road commission came out because twenty-six, by precision up there floods out all the time. They took care of that the other day. But during the flood, and this is what puts salt in the wound here, during the flood, now mind you, downpour, road is flooded over, we have somebody mowing the ditches?
Are you kidding me?
Oh, no, no, listen, listen, I was furious, absolutely furious. We're talking network.
Don't wanna say.
I don't mention names, but the road commission did approach me, we got into it, and I pretty much said who was the genius that sent the brush hog out on the downpour, it was him. And he's telling me that I shouldn't tell him his job. I'm not telling his job, but it's common sense, when it's downpour, you don't send somebody out to brush off the field. We're talking, we're. We're talking, we're talking, we're talk, I'll, I'll post the pictures, okay? And picture this, the brush hog coming down, it sounded like a outboard motor. I saw that. I saw that. Really? It's actually really funny. It isn't when you're hot, he's underwater and you got this. Well, no, no, not funny is in a way it was. Exactly, exactly. Funny is stupid. And he didn't stop. He didn't pay my hour. He kept going.
Yes, he was scared by the foot.
It's common sense.
I know.
It's running in downpour. Are you going to go outside without an umbrella or some protection? Now, we're talking downpour.
Yeah.
And he's out there mowing the grass, I mean, mowing the ditches.
I see it this way. Our road commission is not the brightest people.
Yeah, but we, listen, we never had problems like this. The water comes from 26th and pours down Church Road. I'm not, everybody's been saying it doesn't happen that way. You have to go out there and see where the water is draining. We don't even have water on our side of the road that much. It comes from the big ditch over across it and floods us out, okay? Back in the day when Karen was here, they put the gas line in and I was here that week when they covered it up. A week prior to that, they came in to clean all the ditches out. Well, when they went to put that line in, they put their equipment in the middle of the ditch and it just pretty much collapsed. Now, they had a bond that they were supposed to come back and take care of that. That was never taken care of. So our side of the ditch was cleaned out. It was cleaned out very nice, but when they come to put the, the gas line in, it just. Everything caved in.
Screwed that up.
The other side of the road has never been, I'm going to say 20 years, has never been cleaned out, never, more than 20 years. Now. Everybody is saying that it ain't the problem, but it is. Clancy put that ditch that he put up over there and they're telling, saying that he put too, too small a one to where, and I don't see. It's not flowing the way it's supposed to flow. So when the water comes up, it's supposed to shoot across 26th, it's actually coming back down to Church Road. Even road commission said it's coming back this way. Like I said, I will post pictures, you will not, you. I've had my replace, not replacement culvert, but fill my culvert in twice. This third time, I got to lift it up and re redo it. The township, the road commission came the first time and refilled it in because it washes it all out. You go by the road, they had to come by and put gravel down again because it's all back in the ditch again. Something's got to get done.
Church Road is a county road.
I understand that, but try doing a phone, nobody even returned a phone call.
They won't.
You called, we'll, we'll get back with you. Well, that was about two weeks ago or three weeks when water poured out. We called again. We'll get back with you. Can't get nothing done, nothing.
Who were you talking, who were you calling?
Uh.
The names. Wiley.
Well, it, it.
Wiley has nothing to do with it.
No, 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 when I talked to him, right, no, but okay.
It's the drain commission.
The drains says.
No, they have nothing to do with the road.
Church Road is the road commission.
Right.
And the road commission, you get a girl on the phone.
Teenage.
I follow, I follow work order and hangs up. I follow work order, hangs up. She doesn't even let you ask a, another question. You start to tell her what's the problem and I follow work order, click.
Did you try to talk to the foreman?
How Mike will keep doing that?
His name's Mike, nice guy. I know, I know. He got in this match in the middle of downpour and he's arguing. In fact, he got so bad, he said he'd get his truck and go leave if I wasn't, you know, calming down, okay? Well, what's the difference? I go up to the road commission up there and talk to them. Nothing is getting done. Mind you, we've all, everything's getting built up around here, but the drainage is the same way as it was 30 years ago. And everything's changing.
I know, they're, they're not good. Because I know when they did mizing the road, he was arguing with me about the culvert that they were going to pull out and put another one in that was smaller. And I told him, I said, you can't, you don't, you don't understand the water because he's, oh, I know about the water, I done the, the study. And I said, you don't live on the road. You come and live on the road for a year and tell us what the water is.
It's pretty bad every time it rains hard that they have to put signs up between 26 mile and Spring Hill. Every time it rains.
Water over the road.
Oh, yes, yes. I'll post the pictures and it's, it's terrible.
It's like that all the time. Why don't, why don't the road commission make Clancy dig that up and put a larger drain?
He won't do it because they told him, he, they told him to put what he's got in there now. The road commission told him to do that. So he says, I'm not digging it back up. And it's the same thing with Mike Albert. Mike Albert, I told him he needed to build a Albert.
And to hear it out.
Yeah, they're.
It's their, it's their thing.
But, but it's in our township.
Right, we pay taxes here.
Maybe we can get somebody from the road commission to come here. Hear you up directly with all the residents.
That's what I'm saying. I pay taxes, okay?
We can vote them. And if they say no, that tells us a loss.
If you guys are thinking it's a minor, this is not a minor. Well, I'll, I'll post the pictures and it's, it's at, the neighbor across the street, he's got a vacant lot. It looks like a damn lake out there. We're blocking a foot, two foot deep.
Let's see if we can get somebody here and hear all this.
Yeah, I, I think we could.
I mean, we can at least ask if they don't want to, we can take it from there.
We'll see if we can get.
Well, we got, we got charged with the taxes paying, cleaning out that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What, what is your, what is your tax, what is your drain assessment, what name?
I'm going to have to look that up.
They're not, Helen, I'm Helen.
You're Helen.
No, we had to pay for Helen.
Helen's the 20 year.
No, Marsha.
No, no.
But Marsha. I'll, I'll look. And they just, they just sent, I will download it in early November, the, the, uh, uh, drain assessments for this year. But I'll look on yours and see which one you pay, you know.
Or on the, the west side of church.
Right.
They're not helping.
But the way I get it flat out.
It's the big one, that's the 20 year.
The water comes from the county, I mean, with a big ditch over across the road. That's where I'm, I'm not, if that water stayed on that side of the road, we'd be fine when it comes across.
It's going over there, those big ditches, they're going, it's going over their culverts.
Right.
They're all under.
Take the pictures.
Oh, we got, we have video.
Remember the stitching they did on, on Church Road? That was, that was the Helen drain going into.
Now, what they did on the other side of Church Road, the gravel, I mean, the pay park, on Iverson.
Yes.
There was a farm that kept getting flooded out on the left hand side of the road. They put a, like a diverter. They, they extended it out and leveled it up.
They, they do have, um, regular road commission meetings and you can go before the, they have three road commissioners.
Yeah.
And here, and give it to them.
I thought, because of COVID.
They're elected officials.
No, they're appointed by the board of commissioners, not board of commissioners.
You can go there too.
Yes.
I'll be there, I'll, I'll be there, but.
That's good.
No.
You gotta go to road.
The board of commissioners, sometimes someone will come here with.
Go to the St.
elections or.
St. Clair County Road Commissioner.
Yeah, go to their website and they'll, they'll tell you when they have their meetings and you can go to that.
Yeah.
Maybe maybe be in a person.
I'm.
And you'll, you'll be.
It was so frustrating.
It's, it's.
Well, you know.
Yeah, but it's been, it's, no, it's been two, three years, the same Mike comes out and we go through the same thing.
Well, instead, instead of talking to Mike, you need to go to the commissioners.
That's why I call.
Yeah, Mike's, Mike's on 4A as a supervisor.
Yeah.
You gotta go to, you gotta go, like you said.
Yeah, well.
You gotta go to St. Clair County Board of Commissioners and put your.
Yeah, the road commissioners, there are three people appointed by the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. And they run, they're appointed officials and they run the new policy and appropriate money for the road commission.
Right, and that's their road, not saying that.
Yeah, but there's nothing you guys can do or, I mean.
I can try calling them.
Well.
That's the best we can do is lean on.
You know, I can call them.
And ask them to come and present.
But.
They say no.
Or do they have a plan? That, that's what we want to know. I mean, we've been, I mean, it's just.
Everybody, I mean.
I, I can try.
It's going on here.
Yeah. I'll try talking to Mike and say, what's your plan on fixing?
I don't know right where it came from.
Then that's fine. I got a good report with Mike, like, come on.
But it's, it's. Yeah, they're going to clean the ditches out? Do they have a plan for this?
Yes.
They should have mowed the ditch prior to our rainy season. I mean, that's common sense there.